Are we ready? Just trying to get your attention, please. Excuse me. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is six, what time is it? I can't probably respond. 6:01. What we'll do is we start off always our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Our flag is over here to the left, my left. If you could please stand, place your hand over your heart if you want to. And ready, begin. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. You may be seated. We do have a very, very short agenda with just one item this evening. And, but we do have one other thing we have to do is a board. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to introduce our board and have them stand so you know who's here. We have Kerry Kengas. We have Doug Engelkirk. I have Tony McNada. I have Heather Jackson. Am I missing anybody? Oh, sorry, Rob. Rob Lehman that's in the back. So that's, we missing? And who? Oh, that's right. And Ross, Ross is online. Thank you. All right. So the first order of our business is to approve a flexible agenda. This gives the trustees, they reserve the right to take items out of order if necessary. I need one of my board members to make a motion. Thank you. And I need someone to second it. Heather, raise your hand and second it. So if there's any public comment on this, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of the flexible agenda, just raise your hand, please. That's easier for me. Okay. And how about Ross? Doug, is Ross online? You can't see him? Okay. Well, we'll assume that he did. So motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Our next item is what you're all here for. And I, first of all, I want to thank you all for coming. It's nice to see some new faces and some returning faces. This is an open public forum. It's a no action information. It's for information only. Sorry. No action to be taken. Will be a discussion. I'm going to start off by introducing, we're lucky to have our moderator here this evening. Her name is Lindsay Chichester. She's from the University of Nevada Reno Extension. Extension educator from Douglas County. Lindsay, and I'm going to give you a little bit of information, her bio. Lindsay grew up on a cattle and sheep ranch in Northern California and was a tenure 4-H member. She attended college in Oklahoma on livestock judging scholarships and attained her higher education degrees from West Texas A&amp;M University in Canyon, Texas. She also has a Master of Science in Animal Science, a Master of Arts in Speech Communication, and a PhD in Systems Agriculture with an emphasis in Meat Science. Lindsay has been an extension professional for 12 years, working with both Nebraska Extension and now the University of Nevada Extension. Her current programming focuses on beekeeping, agricultural literacy for youth and adults, meat and food science, youth leadership, agricultural health and safety, animal care, welfare, and agritourism. So I'd like to welcome Lindsay.
All right. How's that coming across? Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me today. Oh, I got to move away from the speaker. Okay. So, I'm getting a little feedback. Is that just me? All right. So, obviously from my bio, I'm not an expert in critical race theory. I will never to be. If you want to talk about animals or meat, I'm your person. But tonight, my job is to moderate and facilitate the session. So what we're going to do, I'm, I'm going to start on this end, is I just put together some ground rules because I know that this topic can be a little bit passionate for everybody. And I just want to remind everyone, let's be respectful to each other. I do expect you to participate. So everyone's going to have an opportunity to take advantage of that. Listen to what everyone is saying. There are no wrong answers. And when we do get to a point where we do have the open opportunity to talk, just one person speaking at a time, it's hard to take all the information in if there's multiple people speaking. So, any other rules that we want to put up here? Everybody good with these? Okay. And then I tried to put together an agenda for our time tonight so we can stay on track with what that looks like. With the hard stop at 7:30, that's the timeframe I was given. And what, I know that the, the board has some other stuff that they'll do, public comments, other things like that at the end. So what we're going to do is, there's three questions tonight. And our mission and goal is to really just know what you guys think critical race theory is, what your interpretation of it is, how you would define it. And if you think it is actually being taught in the classroom, solid examples of where it's being used and how it's being used. So the process that we'll do is, I've got those questions written up here. We'll hand out some Post-its, writing pens, pencils, whatever you would prefer. And I just want you to write down a word or sentence of what, how you would answer the questions up here. Don't give me a whole bunch because I'm going to try to group them together by theme. So take several, take as many Post-its as you need and put them up for each question. For our friends online, I have labeled them like question one, question two, and question three. So when those comments come in, we can sort them accordingly. So what I'll do is start sorting by theme as we go through the questions. And then at the end, we'll be able to have some open discussion to talk about what that looks like. If there's questions, anybody wants to clarify some points or if we want to elaborate on something. So that's kind of the process. We can get, everybody has a chance to provide comments and feedback in hopefully a positive constructive manner. And then we'll, we'll open it up for discussion toward the end. So they are handing out Post-its now. There's no rhyme or reason to the color you get. It's just what we had in my office. So, um, I will unveil our questions. All right. Question number one. When you hear in CRT, I just want to make sure, we're all going to define it the same, critical race theory. What comes to mind? Again, one sentence, one word. If you have multiple thoughts on it, please use post, multiple Post-its. And question number two. What do you think CRT is and how would you define it? So take some time to ruminate on those. Think through them. We've got, I tried to allow plenty of time for that to happen. If we move through our anticipated agenda faster, that's fine. There'll be more time at the end. Does anyone have any questions on the process? Yes, ma'am?
The question three, are you going to show us question three?
Not yet. I want your feedback on question two first. Or questions one and two, I'm sorry. Any other questions? And then when you have them ready, you can either write Q1 or Q2 on them. I can come and get them or you're welcome to come up here and stick them on the boards yourself. Okay. Perfect. All right. It looks like a few of you might still be writing. We'll go a few more minutes. How about our online friends? Are they, they're good? Yeah. All right. So let's do thumbs up if you're good. You feel like you've answered them. Thumbs down if you need a little more time. Okay. We'll do a little more time. It's a couple thumbs down, so. Okay. Let's do thumbs up and thumbs down again. Online is, oh, we got another one coming in online. Okay. Do they want a piece of paper to draw on? I can give you one of my. Okay. I was going to say they can have a back one if they want. All right. I have a four-year-old, so I get it. All right. The hybrid world we now live in. Okay. So what I'll do is I will give you all, nope, you're fine. Question number three to work on. I'll start sorting each of the boards by theme. And while you guys work on that one. All right. Question number three. Do you have specific, specific examples of where CRT is being taught in the Douglas School District? See what you said.
But the, the citizens are making sure that they can be told to come out. Good job, Johnny. So, I have. Look. We're good.
Okay, finish up question one. Um, how's everybody doing on question three? Thumbs up, thumbs down? All right, thumbs up, how are we doing with our online friends? Okay, we got all that feedback. Okay. Let me keep working through these, how are we doing on our? Let me check myself over here on our time. All right, let me keep sorting some feedback. All right, I don't know if you can all see that, but I tried to lump what you had written together and by theme. Um, I tried to start with the, the ones where there were the most of them and then work down to the single responses at the bottom. So, even our, we can't agree. Our experts have a hard time agreeing. There's a lot, right? It's a very complicated, complex topic. There's a lot to unpack with it. Um, we'll get into the discussion on this a little bit more, but I just wanted to put up what everyone in the room and our friends online have come up with on what comes to your mind and how you would define it. So, some positive, some negative. Some of you are just here to learn more and just try to understand it, so I think, uh, it's all over the board. So let me go to number three real quick while you guys check those out. Oh yeah, you guys can get up and look and.
You're not interested in reading or you're not interested in reading? You are, or you aren't, or not? I think this is the reading and writing tool, it's not a listening tool. Not facilitated, it's controlled. Yeah. 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 And they haven't said what is in the writing. Yes, our sensitive points. And how the schools are trying to continue to see what it is which one. I. Hi, Mr. John.
Is that any better? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Not that long. I don't like what they do so well. But I'm not.
Okay, last call for any additions to question three. One once, one twice. All right. Okay, so what I've done on this one, just so you guys know, PD is professional developments. The numbers in the perenns are just how many of those comments I received, just so you can interpret that. So if anybody wants to come up and look at question three, for friends at home, take a gander. Yeah, come on up, I saw you guys added to the, your beautiful drawings. And if you can't read any of my writing, let me know, I was trying to write fast and it gets a little scribbly. Yes. Excuse me. Okay, we've got 30 minutes left. I know that some of you would like to talk, but I want to take a minute to discuss or clarify any points quickly. So that we can. Just going to grab a variety of colors here. So we can make sure that I, for one, interpreted what you wrote correctly and I'm getting the point across. So when I asked you to tell me what comes to mind when you hear or see critical race theory, division, Marxism and socialism, racism, race, skin color, I kind of didn't want to lump them together because they are different things. But some of your comments kind of intertwined and meshed like that. Inclusion and belonging, a false narration and manufactured ideology, hate, discrimination, reverse discrimination, victim mentality, destruction, white shame. A change, is it good or bad? Who wrote CRT, the oppressed white? Manipulation, indoctrination, it's a scapegoat, social emotional learning in Douglas County, wasted school board time and resources and it should not be taught. So is there any, anything for this one, anybody would like to dive into a little deeper right now? Okay. Yes, I think they need, so they can record you. Yeah, that standing one there.
It's on, I'm not that tall. My name is Denise Peroneo, I am a parent. The main goal of Critical Race Theory, I have a bunch of information as I've studied over the last six months, but the main goal of Critical Race Theory was making the issue of race and ethnicity the primary driver of public policy and social change, the domination of the civil rights discourse and legal circles by black neo-Marxists. The idea is that everything must be considered in terms of race. The ultimate connection with Marxism and CRT today is the idea that we need to have equity instead of equality. Equity means there, equality is that everyone's treated the same under the law. Equity means that some way, somewhere, something is generating equal outcomes for everyone. And the only way that the government can generate equity and equal outcomes is through coercion. And I would just conclude in saying that CRT teaches, and this is from Derek Bell, who is, one of the questions was who created Critical Race Theory? Derek Bell is the grandfather of Critical Race Theory, you can Google him. Critical Race Theory teaches that whites have rigged the system so the criteria used to measure the merit and success in school or the workplace are used to keep white individuals on top. In order for non-whites to succeed, hiring metrics as well as education and workplace benchmarks must be eliminated. Any curriculum or training program that says colorblindness is a myth and advocates for eliminating standard measurements of success to achieve racial equality are all part of CRT. This totally negates the civil rights movement and everything it stood for. And you can look up Kimberle Crenshaw, who also is part of the creator, or one of the creators of Critical Race Theory. And she said that we basically, they created fake racism. This, I have a 20-minute presentation, if anybody wants to see me later.
What was Carl, tell me again, what his last name was? Oh no, I'm sorry, Daryl, yeah. Thank you. Okay. That's there?
Yeah. There we go, you can tell I do this all the time. Yeah, I'm a librarian in the school district. That's me. Notice I left that out? That's okay. Hey, so raise your hand if you think that the white people in this room are racist because they were born white and grew up with a white family. Anybody think that? Because that's what our district's teaching. So all this stuff, I don't know about all this, but this is a PD book that I was required to take a class last year with the district. Page 29 of this book says that if you are raised, basically if you're born white and grow up around a white family, the dominant culture, that racism is a social construction of whiteness. In the book, I don't see administrators raising their hand right now saying I'm racist because I'm white, but you're teaching it. It's disgusting and to play these games makes me sick. And this book right here, about two months after this PD thing started, I get this book in the library because we have a contract with the Library Guild, which, Junior Library Guild, which other libraries in the district have a contract with them and have had in the past. And what they do is, the previous librarian paid 2,400 bucks, get books sent out every month, good books. So these books could be in other libraries, not just the one that I work at. Super feminist. It's got in a system of oppression, the oppressor and the oppressed, who's the oppressor? I am because I'm white. Who's the oppressed? People of color. That's what's being taught and it's getting in the hands of kids and it's sick. This is a joke. Let's talk reality. What kind of game is this? This is a sick thing that's going on, it needs to stop. It's a violation of the 14th Amendment. It's a violation of the intent of the Civil Rights Act. And to gaslight this, which means you're trying to say I'm not seeing what I'm seeing, that two plus two equals four. You're telling me, no, you're seeing two plus two, but it doesn't equal what you think it is, it's not really what you think it is. Is that the game that the admin's going to play? Because it sounds like that's the course you're taking. It talks about systems of domination in there, it has pictures of white, white people, I'm white, I have privilege. And what does racism equal according to this book, I can show you. It equals white people oppressing black people, people of color. It's racist because I'm white, I'm an oppressor. These books are getting in the hands of kids, stop playing around. And I got this to say too. These teachings are a clear violation of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the 14th Amendment. The Civil Rights Act prohibits discrimination on the basis of race or color. And under the 14th Amendment, states and school districts have an obligation to prevent the creation of a learning environment that promotes hostility towards a certain race. The 14th Amendment outweighs and limits the First Amendment when it comes to government entities adopting policies and programs perpetuate stereotyping, discrimination, harassment based on one's skin color. And this too, I'm hearing from good sources that the district's afraid of Governor Sisalak or you're going to lose state funding if you don't go along with this nonsense. Come on, man, at some point you got to step up and get a spine and you stand up and you say, we're not doing it in this county. We don't care if you come after us, we'll sue, we'll take it to the Supreme Court, we're going to win because it's a violation of the Constitution. Teaching white kids are oppressors because they're born white and playing these games when it's very clear what's happening? Are you kidding me? You should be ashamed if you're going along with this, think about it. Anyways, that's all I got to say, you can tell I'm a little huffy about it.
All right, before we get into too much discussion, I just want to finish up question one, please. I promise you guys will have some time. Anyone have any other points they want to make or clarify, anything? Question one. Okay, question two. What is it and how would you define it? Is there anything on here that anybody would like to discuss, further clarify? Want clarification on?
I don't see anything out there about the 1619 project.
Okay, can you elaborate more on what that is for me, please?
1619 Project was. Dave Nelson. 1619 Project is basically where the CRT began. It was an article written for the New York Times about slave, a slave ship that landed on America in 1619 and claims that all this, our whole country is based on racism and slavery from the very beginning of 1619. There's also a book called 1620 that was written by professors of history that go in and prove every one of their statements is false. The 1619 Project is just a person's idea of how slavery influenced America from its very foundations. And it was just BS. I would use the rural words for that, but you know what BS is, right? Anyway. This, this is really, we are at a time in our country when we have to be very, very careful. Because I'm, I'm 76, I've seen it quite a bit. And I've watched what has happened over the past 60 years. Especially in the area of education, it has been liberalized, there's been movements made. I even heard someone the other day from one of the unions say that we shouldn't teach math any longer. Is this what we want? Our country has fallen from the top, in the top 10 in the world for education to 28th over the last 30 or 40 years. We're not going in the right direction. And our educators need to take note of this and say, what is going on? What is happening in our education system? Is it a? Is it a dumbing down of our nation so the Marxists can take over? I think we need to ask these questions. And we need to stand up as much as we can and fight what is going on in our education system. Thank you.
Jeannie Shizuru. I just want to say something more to what Paul Jensen was saying. I think this is kind of a joke. I think this is kind of a game because we said this, you told us this was gonna be a listening tour, and now we did a lot of reading and writing, and then he starts talking, and you call that discussion. So I don't even actually agree with the way you've described your process. And I hope that when you go to the Valley, that it is a listening tour.
Well, I'm trying to get to the discussion point. I just want to make sure that what I have written is what all of you have wanted to be up here. So.
Well, that's not good.
Trying to take your comments into consideration. Write them up. Listen to each other. So I'm sorry if you disagree. Yes, sir?
I just have a few things. CRT is not healthy for America. I grew up in the 60s after the civil rights movement, went to a Catholic school. We had black kids, Hispanics, Italians, you name it. We were all, we all studied and were put through the same standards. We played football together, baseball. We fought each other. And we got along. And we loved each other. What's going on today is bad news. We're seeing segregation. We're seeing people labeled as the oppressor and the oppressed. We're seeing these college campuses now where they're having segregated graduations, segregated dorms. What are we gonna do? Put Rosa Parks back in the rear of the bus? Because that's where we're going. We have to stop this. We have to nip this in the bud right now. Because this is pushing us towards Marxist collectivism. It's indoctrinating our kids to be dependent on the state and be victims. This is not good. It's gonna dumb down our country even further. We have to stop it, like now. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, anything else on question two before we move to question three? I know we've been jumping around, so. All right, question three obviously seems to be the more passionate of the questions. I asked if you had any specific examples. Several said none. Some people said they're teaching diversity, acceptance, inclusion, and belonging, preparing for students to go into careers in the workforce, teaching them, students to accept people for who they are on the inside and not their color on the outside. The video that was making the claims came up. People want to review the curriculum, which is not available to them. CRT is being taught as a professional development. With that, other comments about indoctrinating teachers, the diversity equity, equity and inclusion training, the books available to the students, library books. There's gender pronouns, LGBTQ, BLM movement. Being taught CRT is not curricular and it's not practical outside of academia. Social justice is part of the curriculum. And then what is the difference between CRT and SEL, social emotional learning? So I think the main reason that some of you are here tonight is to talk about the things on this list. We've got 15 more minutes until my time with you is up. So.
Lindsay?
Yes?
Lindsay, we have one person online that's got their hands raised. I'm gonna let them, let them speak. So, Doug, please state your full name and and make sure you unmute yourself. And Doug, you're still muted.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure at this point what I was asking about before, but my main comment would be that I'd like to know.
Doug, please state your name.
Doug Johnson. I'm an American citizen. I live in Douglas County. And I, I oppose CRT in the entire country. I'd like to know why are we doing this in Douglas County? Is the county concerned about losing funding from the state and from the federal government? And what is the school board going to do to stop this from happening? It's, I mean, you've heard tonight, it's pretty obvious. This is a Marxist division of our population with the, with the aim of dividing us so that we can be wholly dependent on the government. And this is not what America is, and Douglas County is a conservative county. And I think we need to lead the way in the state and stop this from happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, anyone else online? Sir, are you in line or are you just stretching your legs? Okay?
Todd Poeth. Have kids here at Zephyr Cove, elementary, preschool, kindergarten. Kind of concerns me when I see people concerned about teaching diversity. And they consider that part of CRT. I thought that was a good thing. Really did. My kids are different. I have a special needs daughter. There's a lot of things out there. I think CRT's been kind of turned into kind of a boogeyman. But everything that's wrong with society right now, from BLM to everything else, is being called CRT. You know, from what I've read, CRT is a theory that not only can individuals be racist, we know that's possible. If we don't think that, then we're living in a shell or underneath a rock. But certain institutions, rules, laws, and society norms can be racist without us even knowing it. They might be legal, but still racist. Slavery was legal. Probably the premium definition of racism, oppressing one race to help another. And it goes on and on through society, from Jim Crow, redlining, all kinds of different things have happened over time and in history. They've oppressed different races. We need to look at that, and we need to honestly answer it. We should not make whites bad. We should not make anyone else. But we have to look at some of the things that are in place that can be racist. We have to look at them with an open mind. I'm gonna bring out an example that is quite, I think ironic, considering we're here at George Wattel High School. This school was, the land for this school was donated by the Wattel Estate back in 1958. Probably signed about 1961. I don't know if anyone's actually seen the deed for this school. But covenant number three. Remember, this is a legal document. This is still public. You can go find it. States, they have different things like building restrictions, you know, pass them use for a school. Item three, no part of said premises shall be leased or rented to any person not of the Caucasian race. 1961. When was this made illegal? I don't know. 64. You were alive. All that stuff. So this is a situation, guys. Things like this can still exist, not to the extent they are. And I don't say we take it the other direction either. But let's look at the reality of this. This is not being taught in Douglas County. It's not part of the curriculum. Diversity is not CRT. Let's focus on things like getting a kindergarten teacher for our 31 students in our kindergarten class down here. Why are we spending so much time on this stuff? Because people get wound up from all this stuff, Marxist theory and crap like that. It's not. Look at what it really is, guys. It's not something that you need to be completely concerned about. Look at it. Let's face diversity. Let's look at reality, what's going on. Thank you. I know you don't agree, but I had to say my piece. I'll let you guys say yours.
For the record, Jeannie Shizuru, and I'm not white. I'm Asian. And I just want to say, if, if the history is as bad as that guy says. If the history is as bad as he says, and white people are so, you know, racist and that, then I suggest that we do all the same for all the other races. Let's have all the examples of where the Asians were racist, where the American Indians were racist, where the African-American, black people were racist. Because there isn't a human rate, population, civilization in, in, in human nature that doesn't have racist tendencies towards people who are not like them. To have it all pointed at white people is extremely discriminatory and unequal. And, you know, there was a time in my relatives' history, Japanese-Americans, where they, we were interned. That was a racist act. And when we were the boogeyman, so to speak, the Quakers stood up for us. And I'm, I'm here as an Asian-American to stand up for white people because we should, we should be standing up for white people and we should be insisting on equality for white people. If you want to talk about how awful white people are, then every other race should have a, have a place at that table that has to hear all about how awful they have been.
Okay? Other comments?
My name is Brandon Griffith. I'm the father of kids here in Douglas County School District. I mean, I can appreciate everybody's viewpoint here and, and the gentleman that just came up a moment ago. I don't think anybody in this room or in this county or in this school district would argue that racist things have happened in this country and documents from 1961 prove that. But I don't think that's what we're talking about here. I think my, my thoughts and what the thoughts by most people that are, that are here today are things like Q1, what comes to mind, you know, division, racism, things like that. There's inclusion, belonging on there, but I don't think anybody's worried about inclusion or belonging in this room or that's part of this CRT discussion. I don't want to pretend to define CRT. I don't know what the whole thing is. It's been around for a long time, and there's a lot of different elements of it. So let's not eat the whole elephant. Let's talk about the things that we are, that we do care about and that we are concerned about. And for me, and again, like everybody else here, I think it's things that are racist, right? Racism is, is telling a group of people what their characteristics and abilities are based on their race, based on their skin color. Those are the things we don't want in our school district. Those are the things we don't want you teaching our children or our children to be taught. We don't want it to be in books that they can check out in the library. You know, things like, hey, because you're white, you're privileged. That's racist, okay? Things like you have unconscious racial bias because you're white. That's racist, okay? Those are the elements of CRT that we're talking about. Again, I'm not trying to say all of CRT is bad. Maybe there is elements of it that's good, that finds injustices in our current system. And are there some? Probably, yes. But let's talk about what we care about. So I appreciate this forum. I appreciate you guys. I appreciate Superintendent Lewis and the board affording us this opportunity. But let's get to the meat and potatoes of what we're talking about here. I don't want my kids being taught racist things. So if you're gonna, and I don't think that CRT is currently in Douglas school system, at least as, as part of the curriculum. I'm not saying that. I'm part, I'm one of the nuns here, that there is none. But seeing things like it's being taught as P, as part of professional development concerns me. I don't know if it's true or not. I'm not a teacher here. But if it is true, I'd like that to be addressed at some point in this discussion. If there are books like that available to our children, I want them out of the, out of the library. They shouldn't be there. I'm all for differing viewpoints and everybody having a seat at the table and open dialogue. But things that say white kids are racist or you're an oppressor because you're white is racist. That's racist. That's the definition of racism, and it can't be there. In the same way that a book shouldn't say that Hispanics are lazy criminals or Asians are bad drivers. That's racist. Those shouldn't be there, right? So I think that's what the root of this is. This is what the concern is that we all have, and this is what we should be talking about. So what are we teaching our kids? Or how are we gonna make sure that CRT, or maybe not CRT, how are we gonna make sure that these racist teachings aren't in our school district? That's what we should be talking about, and I hope that we can get to that point at some point and that some of these concerns are addressed by the school board, by Superintendent Lewis, by whoever, whoever's in charge of professional development. Please, let's, let's address these things that are the concern and why we're having this meeting, I think. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Lisa Schaefer, and this is my husband, John Schaefer. This is Johnny Schaefer and Jaden Schaefer. And it came to our attention last week that Critical Race Theory was in professional development offerings here in Douglas County. And that was something that, you know, us as parents of school-aged children and as community members of the, of the community here in the county were concerned about. And we do appreciate the fact that it has been created to have this open forum, to have a discussion. And we appreciate you hearing our personal opposition to Critical Race Theory right now. So over seven years ago, we decided to move to this community to start a family. It was very purposeful in our move to this community. And we expect to have our children learn here that they should be proud of their accomplishments, proud of their country. That is extremely important to us. We do not want them to be apologetic for their race or their ethnic origins. For us, the CRT is working to break down our society at its fundamental roots. And with that, it's pitting us against each other, and that's not what we want to see. By indoctrinating, indoctrinating our youth to be apologetic, or on the other side, to demand to have entitlement based on skin color is unacceptable and racist. It speaks directly against the civil rights movement of the 1960s and Dr. Martin Luther King, whom I assure you all know, he told us to judge a man not by the color of his skin, but by the content of his actions. And that's what we work to, you know, work with our kids. It's who are you on the inside? Doesn't matter what you're like on the outside. What's your character? And if we're allowing this inaccurate racist propaganda to continue here and to permeate into our schools, our community will, will be divided, and it will not be the community that we fell in love with and that we do love. Allowing the falsehoods to be espoused in professional development, which is what I was informed of, is what's dangerous. The problem is, is that when you train staff on an educational pedagogy, you're basically gonna have a trickle-down effect. It's going to be believed as truth. It's going to come into the classroom, whether it's direct or indirect. It's gonna have huge ramifications. And it's gonna be reflected in the instructional practices of the teachers and discourse, just normal discourse inside the classroom. And I would like to see greater oversight from our leadership and our board in the professional development offerings that are there within the district. We recognize that this is the purpose and intent, or excuse me, that it is the purpose and intention of those that push CRT to create guilt, to divide us as a community and to sow discord. That is not what America is about. That's not what Douglas County is about. Our response is to fight back and organize the will of the people against this vile ideology. I call upon the board and the leadership here within the district to take a strong and clear stand against the teaching of Critical Race Theory to staff as well as to the students. We thank you.
Denise Peronio again. Just to the gentleman that spoke earlier, who has kids at Perrin's Zephyr Cove. Diversity doesn't mean what it used to mean. Diversity used to mean that, you know, people had different opportunities and diversity meant that all races were accepted regardless of who you were or what your social skills were. That's not what Critical Race Theory defines diversity as. Diversity under Critical Race Theory is defined as division. Dividing the races and making sure that there is segregation between whites and everyone else. So if you look at Derek Bell's, who's the grandfather- So if you look at Derek Bell's, who's the grandfather of critical race theory, if you look at his definition, all of those things that you see up there in question one and question two, that people say are concerns, are in the definition of critical race theory, which started as critical theory in the nineteen twenties, um, brought here to German, by Germans as Marxist theory. It went from critical theory to critical legal theory. Critical legal theory was taught in the colleges by, uh, the people that came here from Germany. And then it transformed into critical race theory in nineteen eighty-nine, when Derek Bell coined that terminology. So everyone says, well, there's a lot of diversity about what critical race theory is. It, it's very clear. You don't have to try and find a definition of it by all of these things and saying, well, it's a lot of different things. It's all of those things combined and it's, the definition of critical race theory is very, very clear. It's not elusive at all. So I agree with you that diversity used to be a good thing, but that's not what critical race theory means. They don't define diversity as that.
Jeff Sparrow. So this PD seems to me to imply that we aren't being given full disclosure. The school district needs to practice full transparency to us parents and stop treating us like children. This constant chasing of state and federal funds is a poor excuse for toeing the government line. We need to return to educating the kids usefully, math, English, STEM, et cetera, and leave the politics out of it. The school board needs to represent the parents' wishes. The next comment is from Rick McGuire. Every human being has some unconscious bias, but not everyone becomes explicitly biased. Teaching students to recognize that and guiding them through the process of understanding that and towards exception, acceptance is a critical process for their social development. This is not CRT.
Okay, so, um, I know we're ending our time together, but it seems like there's three areas that have come up in the public discussion and comment period. Uh, Superintendent Lewis, would you like to, or someone, I don't know who would be the best person, um, just to talk a little bit more about a curriculum, CRT as a professional development and the library book? Okay.
And. So there's been several comments, and I'm not sure where this is coming from, that somehow that we have been, uh, threatened with money uh, or else we teach CRT. I have absolutely a superintendent of school, no idea what anyone's referring to on that. There has been no, uh, directive of withholding of funds if Douglas County School District doesn't implement CRT. So that's a narrative that certainly is not at our level or within our state, um, that I'm aware of. Um, professional development, again, the gentleman has the opportunity to come up here and, and speak. That doesn't make it reality and we have, uh, the, the, what he has taken is a book on multicultural education, which if you are, all of our teachers are required by the state of Nevada to take a course in multicultural education as part of their licensure. And so, uh, so again, I, uh, we will examine that book, um, through our PDC. We're certainly willing and open in any time when issue, or issues come up to us to see what we're doing. Can we do things differently? Is the whole context of the book, or is this taken out of context of the book? Taking pieces and parts and not keeping it within the whole context of the frame of that training? That has not been an issue. That book has been used in our professional development for over three years. This is the very first time, the first employee who has ever brought this issue to our, to the forefront. But it does require then that we need to go out and we need to have those conversations. Are other people feeling that way? They're just not willing to come forward and, and have those discussions. And that's my job as superintendent, is to make sure that, that we're getting that input and then, uh, addressing that appropriately. CRT is not within our Nevada state standards. Um, those state standards are, um, uh, online. They're available. Um, what I would tell you as superintendent, we would welcome any one of you at any time. If you want to visit a classroom in Douglas County, call us and we will make that happen. Because there's a national narrative out here that things are going on that are not going on in Douglas County schools. And if they are, we have processes. So I take it from a political standpoint. We don't want our teachers talking about politics and, eh, eh, we don't mind them talking about politics from a unbiased standpoint. We don't want our teachers to, I'm Republican and I'm gonna, I'm, that's my view and all my kids in my class. Do people step across the line occasionally? Yes, they do. Do we have processes in place as a district to get back in line with what the standards are and how we're gonna teach it? Yes, we do, and we address those. And we've had concerns and obviously during political seasons, uh, you get more of those concerns, um, as it's hot and fresh on everyone's mind. But as a district, we have processes. We also have processes for how standards are developed and how materials are adopted within our, uh, district. And that has, that process has been taken over a little bit, uh, in terms of adoption by the state and they give us, you know, options to go within that. But the standard process, so let's say, let's say the state of Nevada says we're gonna put critical race theory in our schools and in our standards. That process is a very slow process. That process is an engaging process. That process provides our parents with opportunities to provide input in that process. It's not something that tomorrow, critical race theory is gonna be in the, in the Douglas County schools because we made that decision. We teach the standards of the state of Nevada. And so that we get criticized sometimes about that the curriculum isn't available. We have textbooks. We've, we've released, you know, Denise has, uh, come in and, and got the textbooks. We've sat down with her. We've gone through those. Um, I think there's more meetings actually coming up. Um, and again, so we're as transparent as, as if anyone wants to come in and have those conversations, we are certainly willing to have those. I, I don't think you feel like we've hidden any term. I hope so. I shouldn't put words in my mouth. Maybe you do. Right. So when people say there's no curriculum, we have standards. We teach to the standards and our teachers are professionals who develop lessons to teach those standards. Do we have, um, do we have curriculum in, in, in areas? Yes. So we have Eureka Math. It's, that's a guide. But again, our teachers are the professionals and they teach to the standards. And, and so, you know, what happens a lot of times, people want to come in and say, give me all your lessons from government class. Well, that's not how it works. You could be in Mr. Montfleto's class or you could be, uh, in Miss Dedman's class. And they're gonna teach the standards. They may get there a different way. They may use different materials, uh, to get there, but they're teaching this, the, to the standards. Well, I, it's, again, ma'am, you can come into our classroom. I invite you. Well, you can also look at the standards on that, uh, website of the state of Nevada. They're. They, yeah, yes, it is what we teach. It is what we teach. There are standards for every class, yes. And, and I welcome you to come in and meet with us anytime. And I think that's the thing that, you know, there's a lot of people talking that have never been in a classroom in Douglas County School District. And again, I want to welcome you. We have nothing to hide. We have absolutely nothing to hide. Brandon? No, I mean, so.
Keith, can you repeat the question?
Oh, so the question was, is there an, is, do we perceive there's an appetite from the state of Nevada to implement CRT? Is that kind of gist of your question, aspects of it? So in two thousand eighteen, there was a revision of the social studies standards. And so within that, there's a strand in multicultural. And so, um, again, I think, you know, the state at, at the basic level of what multicultural might mean at the kindergarten level is conflict. How do we handle conflict? You and I, you know, we have a disagreement on the playground. How do we, how do we handle that conflict? So that's kind of the multicultural and, and that's a theme and that was added in two thousand eighteen. As your, as your superintendent and in any state meeting, critical race theory has not been a discussion of implementation. And my curriculum directors are right over here and, uh, I, I, I don't think I've said anything that they know differently.
What year was multicultural added?
Uh, two thousand eighteen. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. I'm, if they're done with me. Well. Go ahead. Who, our board member, Tony Magna? What has he asked for? Uh, Mr. Magnana, what, who, who and what did you ask for? Cause I know nothing about this. I'd like you to explain it to everyone. Who did you talk to? That's all I can say. Doug?
Doug Engelkirk, uh, school board trustee, started this last January. And, and I'm gonna fess up that I'm probably the one that's getting this ball rolling because I've brought it before the board and so we're doing these town halls to find out information. My concern is I don't, I've seen some evidence that it is in our, our PD and in some textbooks, or not textbooks, but school books. And that is a concern to me. And so that's one reason I'm bringing it up. I don't believe it's, you know, in this conservative, um, county, it's, it's before us yet, but I'm trying to get ahead of the game because, yeah, it might be a slow process, but it's also a slow process fighting things. And I think when people say things, this is to address your question, Keith, about, you know, the funding and we're going after the funding and everything like that. I think it's, it's, it probably stems from like the mask issue. And the government, you know, SISLAC says, we have to wear masks or we're gonna get fined or we're gonna get OSHA or whatever that is. Financial threats. And so it could be the same thing when CRT does come around to our neck of the woods. And so I'm just trying to get ahead of it. That was my purpose for bringing it before the board and that's the reason we are having these town halls. So thanks for bearing with me.
Okay.
Can I speak some more?
One, and then, okay. All right, we're fifteen minutes over. Two more of you have indicated interest?
I just wanted to say really quick, um, that I have spoken to four of the school board members about this issue. They've been very open and willing to listen. Um, I have also contacted the school district. I was given a box of textbooks that were kind of outdated and didn't really apply. So I asked if I could get access to current curriculum and I was given access to that curriculum. I haven't been able to get online yet, so Rami's gonna help me do that. Um, but I think the concern from our community is the trickle-down effect that Doug is talking about. It is being taught in Washoe County and it is being taught in Carson City. So it's just, you know, the anticipation is that we're gonna be next. Um, and there is evidence of that. The Washoe County School Board last year passed, uh, what students had requested as social justice theory. So it is being taught in other school districts in the state, not at the request of the state yet. But, um, as far as anybody in this room is concerned, the school district here has been very accessible. And so I commend them for that, but I think that our concern as parents are that the trickle-down effect doesn't happen and that's why we're having this discussion. No, he didn't say there is, there's curriculum. It's independent, but it's independent to teachers, correct? Each teacher has their own curriculum. So you, I, I am getting access online to be able to look at the curriculum and I have been invited to go to any classroom and watch anytime I want, um, to what's being taught. So I haven't done that part yet, but I, I have been given access to the books. That's what I've been told. I haven't done that part yet. Well, I think that's online on the state. The state curriculum is available online. Standards. The state standards are available online. Curriculum is individual to each teacher. So you would have to get from each teacher what they're teaching. I think probably the areas that are of most concern are English, social studies, government. You know, those, where it's most likely gonna be taught. But I, I have been given access to that, yes.
My name is Jeannie Shizuru again, and I just want to give you some more feedback. When we finished that thing and you said that was the most passionate and so that's what we're gonna concentrate on. Uh, that wasn't like a consensus. You just decided this is where you were gonna direct the conversation. And when we were talking about this at the school board meeting, it was supposed to be a listening tour. And so then Keith Lewis comes and summarizes it for you and you're taking his notes. So I just want to say that how you conducted this listening tour didn't quite meet with what I thought was gonna happen. And I'm hoping that when you come down to the valley, that it looks and feels like a listening tour than, and not a Keith Lewis or even Doug speaking, that it follows what the school board meeting said when they set this up.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, we can structure it however you want. Um, at the five minutes that you each could have prepared a time limit for, we would have quickly ran out of time. I had no idea how many people to prepare for. So this was the best approach to be able to gain a lot of feedback. The school board and the superintendent had asked me to make it a listening session. They wanted to get information on what you think it is, your perception of it. And so that's what I've tried to do for them. That was their request from me. So. Well, I, I feel then.
I'm just saying that when you listen to people and you can tell just by the few comments, it's a lot deeper and a lot more specific than being channeled into three general topics and you quickly taking, you know, four words on each one or something, when you're actually hearing what people have to say on various subjects. It's a different experience than what we went through tonight. So I agree, I agree with that guy that this was kind of a game.
Okay. Well, everyone is entitled to their opinion. Yes, sir. I think they need it for the recording.
This is more from my heart. What I'm seeing in America today really concerned me. I'm seeing this division happening. We're divided about vaccines. We're divided about masks. We're divided about how we treat COVID and we don't need any more division. What we need is to come together and anything that divides us, we, all of us, we need to contribute to stopping that. Whatever form that takes, we have to come together as a nation again, where we can sit down and we can discuss and work things out. This division, I don't know if you're feeling it, but I sure am. And it's, we each have to do our part to stop that and we can do that. It starts right now. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or feedback from our online friends?
Yeah. So we had a question online. What happens when the standards are objectionable? And I, I'm gonna assume that they're asking during a adoption process. And maybe I shouldn't make that assumption. I, I guess through adoption process, I, again, there's chance, there's opportunity for input. They take that input and then, um, then, uh, ultimately all standards are then passed at the, uh, state level with the, uh, state, uh, depart, or, uh, Board of Education. Um, and so they go through a process. Um, and then, I mean, do you have anything more on objectionable standards? Rami Cronin is our curriculum director. What's wrong with her being the curriculum director? But you were. But you were disgusted that she was the curriculum director. I was just wondering why.
Rami Cronin-Mack, Executive Director of Education Services. With regards to standards that might be objectionable, there is, like Mr. Lewis said, during the process of them being adopted, you can certainly give public comment and give input, be it the state board meeting when they go to adopt them. They also have subcommittees that are open, public meetings, just like this one. If there was a current standard, that's one of the Nevada state standards that you read through and you see is objectionable, then you would take it to one of us at the district office to, to work through it with you and talk about what you might find objectionable about it. And we would have that process and that conversation to figure out, you know, what it is in that standard. It would probably depend on the content area, honestly. But I, you know, I would say your first start, if you're concerned about what we're teaching, is to go to the Nevada Department of Education website. The academic content standards are there for every content area, including fine arts, career and technical education, everything, including family life, sex education, all of those are there. And you could take a look at those, and then certainly if you have questions, please call the district office. I'd be happy to sit down with you. So with Mr. Brown, who's our assistant director, we could see what, what it is that you find objection to, and at least have a conversation and see what we can do about it.
Okay, well, I don't see a line. For the sake of time and trying to keep to the time, I'm gonna wrap up this process. At some level, I hope you feel like we have listened to you. We've been able to provide opportunities for feedback. And some of your questions have been answered. I know it's an ongoing process. We'll be doing this again down in the valley in a couple of weeks. So if you would still like to come out and be a part of that, you're invited to on October 21st. So without further ado, my portion is over, and I'll turn it back over to your president.
Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay, so much for doing this for us. I personally think you did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's give her a round of applause. It's hard, this is hard to do. Okay, we're gonna move into continuing with our agenda. And item three is public comment. So let me, let me tell you how this works. Comments from the public are invited at this time, at this time, excuse me, on topics not specifically addressed elsewhere in the agenda. We do have a sign-up sheet. And it's over here on the table. And anyone that would like to address the board, you can come and sign up on our sign-up sheet and to speak about the topic, and let us know what you want to talk about. Individuals wishing to address the board at this time will be limited during this public comment. You're limited to three minutes, yes, Denise knows. And the board is precluded from acting on items raised during public comment that are not already on the agenda. So how this works is you get to come up and talk. If you ask any of us questions, unfortunately, it's very difficult for us, but we can't respond during public comment. So we'll go ahead and get started, and somebody needs to keep somewhat of a time, I guess.
I'll keep...
Okay, anyways, so does anyone want to do public comment? Raise your hand, or come on up, and I guess not. All right. No, okay, well, going, going on. All right, public comment is closed? None online? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. And we'll be doing this again next week.